All rise. Councilmember Bolden, will you lead us in prayer, please?
President of the Father, we thank him once again for his service within the community. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Roll call.
Councilmember Dietz.
Here.
Bolden.
Here.
Levens.
Here.
Sandsing.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Mashburn. Trailer.
Here.
Twitty. Smith. Rains.
Here.
Two absent, sir.
Thank you. For you is a presentation hence your last seven and intended motion. And a motion saying any discussion changes. All right, all its favor approve in the minute, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All reach consent agenda. Do I hear anything about the consent agenda?
Don't move away from the consent agenda.
Any discussion? All of the members say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, this brings us to a point, I need a motion, suspend the rules. We have a final plat. It's on in front of you that didn't.
That's in.
Got a motion saying to suspend the rules. Roll call. Roll call this.
No, we can do all of this.
Okay. All of the favor, suspend the rules. Any. Going to the final plat? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Whether or not entertain a motion to approve the final plat, or at least to talk about it.
So move.
Okay. Got a motion saying now discuss it. And who's here to tell us about this final plat, where it is.
Where it looks good actually.
Yes, Jackson Terrace is north of town. All you may not know it. It's the last phase of that subdivision that's ever going to be built. That kind of the end that.
It is kind of sad.
It is, it is. Dick Jones started that, nephew finished it. Oh, maybe not.
Now we got that one other little.
Yeah. We've got the roads, the curbs and gutters. The streetlights in the water and sewer has all been installed to city specifications, and we see no reason not to accept it.
All right, motion saying any more discussion or question? All right, all of the favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, we've approved that plat. Then we're back to our agenda. Brings us to a presentation from Rock Region. This is Becca Green with Rock Region. She's here to entertain us for a few minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you council members for inviting us to speak with you tonight and have a presentation. With me tonight is our chief executive officer, Justin Avery. And I'm the director of public engagement. We are excited to present this update on the development of the Metro Connect Jacksonville microtransit zone. And this is Justin and I's first time to be before the council tonight. So we're excited to take you through what we've been doing. And we're going to have about 25 minutes. I'm joined tonight by our senior transit planner at Foursquare ITP, Boris Palchik. So he's also going to help me present tonight. He is joining us through Microsoft Teams. So I'll be walking through a couple of slides to kick us off. He'll come in and do a couple and explain more about the transit planning side of things, and then I'll come back in and wrap it up. And my one request for housekeeping tonight is to save time and be mindful of our time to please hold your questions until the end. And if I need to go back to a slide that you want me to reference, I can do that. So we're excited to offer this transit service to Jacksonville service. And I think if I'm not mistaken, it's possibly the first service ever where you have transit service within the city proper, taking people where they need to go. And we're very excited to offer a one-time infusion of CARES Act funding, which is one-time funding that we received during the pandemic to help kick this off. Over a five-year period, we will be investing more than half a million dollars through CARES Act funding to kick this off for the city of Jacksonville. And that's money that the city never has to pay back. It's just a wonderful blessing to have that, to get back and have to recover after this pandemic that we've been through. So first, I'll start off with our mission, and that's to provide safe, reliable, convenient, and cost-effective transit service with a skilled team of employees dedicated to our customers' needs and committed to excellence. We are governed by a 12-member board of directors, and those directors are appointed by the jurisdictions where we operate service. In the future, we will be evolving this board to have representation among our various funding partners. And we're also led by eight executive leadership team members. Again, Justin Avery is with us tonight. He is our new chief executive officer and served as our chief financial officer before that at Rock Region Metro. I'm a part of this leadership team as well. And the rest of the individuals you see there on the screen are part of the leadership team. We have a smart, hardworking, dedicated group of professionals who are ready to put together the service that this region would like to see as far as public transit service. Kicking it off, we are, this is a map of the Littlerock urbanized area. The area that you see in green there is the urbanized area for Littlerock, even though it includes more than just the city of Littlerock. You can see that North Littlerock's there, Benton Bryant, Maumell Sherwood, Cabot, and Jacksonville. All of those areas are determined by the U.S. Census. And the Federal Transit Administration, which oversees Rock Region Metro, has designated Rock Region Metro as the recipient of all federal dollars for public transit for that area in green, for the overall Littlerock urbanized area. This means that any city in the area that wants to put up their transit service, they can do that with their city funds, of course. But if they want to have the power of even additional dollars of federal spending for public transit, they must work through Rock Region Metro because we are the designated recipient of the funds for that area. Conway, as you can see, is red there. They are in their own urbanized area because they, a few years ago, surpassed 50,000 people. And there's also a geographic lessening of population density along I-40 that's just far enough to put them in their own urbanized area. But a few years ago, Conway did opt to make Rock Region Metro the designated recipient of their federal public transit funds. Those funds must be used in Conway, but they recognize the expertise that we have, being the state's largest public transit agency, and have made us their designated recipient. So we are also working on some public transit service in Conway as well. A little history of our history with Jacksonville. In 1986, Jacksonville joined an interlocal agreement that created Rock Region Metro as a transit authority. Before 1986, transit service was operated by Metro Plan. For you guys who maybe have remembered that and lived through that time. And then basically, the service got so big that we spun off into our own agency, and Jacksonville was one of our original interlocal agreement partners. So we operated Route 36, which you guys may remember was an express route that served Sherwood and Jacksonville up until 2020, at the beginning of the pandemic, when we suspended Route 36 due to multiple years of declining ridership. That was pre-pandemic. And then a pandemic-related need that we had while we didn't know how coronavirus was spread, and we had to limit passengers on our vehicles. And there was a need to prioritize the highest ridership routes to get people to where they needed to go. But we had also engaged in a comprehensive operational analysis study that kicked off in 2019 before the pandemic hit. And Route 36, along with several other routes that were low performing as far as multiple years of declining ridership, were already going to be put up for recommendation for removal because of the low ridership numbers. So we've been working through with the city ever since then to figure out what the city would like, as far as what would work best for the public transit needs here in this community. And we came up with the idea to launch microtransit service here. And we signed an agreement late last year, in November 2021, with the city of Jacksonville to launch this microtransit service, again with the aid of one-time's pandemic-related CARES Act funding. So the benefit of this partnership, it engages a somewhat familiar ride-hailing, ride-sharing service. Many people in the room are familiar with Uber and Lyft and other similar services. So it's a somewhat similar platform, and it allows us to monitor it, launch it, and monitor it for residents to use, and also visitors who happen to be within Jacksonville if they want to use it. It also utilizes and capitalizes on Metro's experience as the largest public transit agency in Arkansas. We manage highly robust and technical FTA requirements on a regular basis. And so we're able to do that and take a lot of that reporting burden and compliance burden off the city. And it also, of course, addresses multiple transportation needs that your residents have. The service design, again, we have partnered with Foursquare ITP. And Boris, who is our colleague on this call, will be stepping in here in a moment to talk about what they have been doing on the transit planning side of things to help us with that. And then the actual microtransit software itself is operated by Translok, which is a subsidiary of Ford Mobility, which is a spinoff of Ford, the motor company that we all know. So this has been a technology in a group that has a lot of serious, large backing of established players in the transportation space. And it was, this is a plan that was developed with the input of the city of Jacksonville staff. We've been working for several months now, meeting on a regular basis with different members of the staff and members of the Jacksonville community to develop this service. We have looked, we've used data. So some of the data that Boris is about to walk you through, some of that was pulled by Metro Plan. And it stuffs that Metro Plan, in their role as our metropolitan planning organization that's in charge of the region's long-term, long-range transportation plan, they pool things like traffic patterns and whatnot to look and see where people are going and how they're moving around our region. So we use that as well, as well as other data-driven resources that Boris will walk you through. And then finally, we had some stakeholder meetings here recently where we took all of this planning work that we had done, and we vetted that and refined it with representatives from the Jacksonville community who represent major employers, people from the educational sector, the healthcare sector, social services, folks in the community who have populations who might be using public transit. And we got some good feedback from that group. It was very well received. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Boris, to walk us through the next couple of slides.
All right, thanks, Becca. Okay, great. So Becca covered some of this already, but I hopefully will provide a little bit more detail just to make sure everyone's on the same page of what microtransit is, how it operates, what it looks like, and so on. So as Becca mentioned, microtransit is a shared ride service. It provides point-to-point and accessible ride-hailing transportation. It's a technology-driven demand response service. So if anyone has used Uber and Lyft, you'll kind of understand what that means. People book the rides through a smartphone app generally. It's a very similar interface to Uber and Lyft. It provides more coverage than fixed route service. That's one of its main benefits because the routes aren't limited to particular roadways, particular corridors. It operates generally within a zone, a designated zone. So more coverage than fixed route service, but also more immediate and more responsive service than your traditional dial ride service. A lot of communities have had something like dial ride in the past where users had to call up and talk to dispatcher and plan their trip days or sometimes even weeks in advance. That's not what microtransit is. Microtransit is a much more immediate type of service where people can book trips in real time whenever they need to go. So it is similar to Uber and Lyft in that regard, but it's different in many other important ways. Number one, microtransit is a shared ride service. So whereas Uber and Lyft mimic taxi service more than a shared ride, in some markets, there is a shared version of Uber and Lyft, but generally, it's more like a taxi service. Microtransit operates a little differently. It allows people to ride together. So a scenario may be one or two people get on, then, you know, as they're going along, another person might get on, and then three people get on and a couple get off, and so on. So there's this constant turnover, just like on a typical bus service, where people are boarding and alighting, boarding and alighting, and it's more of a shared use experience. Unlike Uber and Lyft, it also uses a dedicated fleet of vehicles. Those vehicles are generally designed specifically for transit operations. So smaller buses, cutaway-type buses, or vans, or minivans. Those are the types of services, types of vehicles that are typically used for microtransit service. And then the last important characteristic of microtransit that's listed apart from Uber and Lyft is its fare structure. So with Uber and Lyft, anyone who has used it, you know that the fare is a little bit unpredictable. There's surge pricing occasionally. You never really know what your fare's going to be until you finish the trip. It's a distance-based pricing scheme. With microtransit, the fares are set by a public agency typically. In this case, Rock Region Metro, or maybe Jacksonville, or maybe collaboratively with different public agencies. But it's a much more predictable fare structure. So people know in advance, this trip is going to cost me $2, and that's it. There's no surprises. So if we move on. From a rider's perspective, there are a number of key features that make microtransit appealing. First of all, the easy booking. So as I mentioned in the past, to book demand-response type of service like dial ride, you had to call up and kind of negotiate on a pickup time and so on. This, with microtransit, it allows you to use an app and book, you know, almost instantaneously through that app. So it's a much simpler system. It also allows you to see where vehicles are in real time. So it takes away kind of that fear of the unknown that is sometimes associated with transit service, where people don't know where their bus is, when it'll arrive exactly, and so on. With microtransit apps, you can generally see where the vehicle is and when it'll arrive to pick you up. Reasonable wait times and travel times, those are also important from a rider's perspective. As I said in the past, dial ride services usually required a lot of advanced planning, a lot of advanced reservation. And microtransit is much more immediate than that. And we already went over the affordable fares, but I just want to reiterate that that's really key from a rider's perspective. Booking is done through the mobile app, but we understand that not everybody has access to, you know, smartphones or mobile technology in general. So there's always a call-in option. So for people who don't have access to the app, they can call a number and speak to a dispatcher representative to book their trip sort of on the backend, so to speak. Next slide, please. So microtransit can support a variety of trip purposes. So as I mentioned, it's usually operated with a zone structure. So microtransit can provide local circulation within the designated zone. So that means local trips to shopping centers, job access opportunities, medical trips, et cetera. It also can provide what's called first and last mile connections to other regional services. Becca mentioned that the Route 36 express ride used to serve Jacksonville. There isn't currently express service in Jacksonville, but in the future, if there ever is, then microtransit can, you know, allow for connections to and from more regional services. It can also serve to close gaps by time of day. So in some communities, microtransit is used specifically in the late evening hours, when it doesn't make sense to operate fixed route service, and weekends as well. And that's when the microtransit kicks in. Another really important feature on microtransit is that it's a very data-rich service because everything is booked through the app. So every trip request is then saved in a database. And from a planning perspective, it's possible to, you know, over time, observe trends as they emerge. And so microtransit is a really good way to gauge the interest and the demand for transit service. Both while it's operating, and then also it helps you understand that, you know, when the time is right, potentially to upgrade, so to speak, to another type of service. So if you notice that there's a lot of trips that are emerging from a particular corridor, you may want to eventually siphon off those trips into a fixed route service along that corridor. So it's a very useful planning tool. Next slide, please. So the question then, now that we know a little bit about microtransit and how it operates, the question is, where should microtransit operate? In your community in particular. So microtransit, the way that we plan microtransit is we look at the community characteristics, the environment in which the service is going to operate. Some of the key features we look at are the density, the demographics, land use, and regional travel patterns. And those help us understand where different service types would make sense. Typically, microtransit works best in a lower-density environment. The graphic on the right shows that as an area becomes more and more urban, there's more types of transit that could be considered. Everything from fixed route service to high-frequency, what's called bus rapid transit service, and the like. But as you get more suburban and even more rural, lower-density, the types of services that typically work best, are most effective, are commuter service, which you guys had in the past with Route 36, and shared mobility. So microtransit is a type of shared mobility. So as we look at where in the community to plan microtransit service, we look at that kind of list of components that are there on the screen, the density, demographics, and so on. So we'll talk about that in the next couple of slides. So next slide, please. All right, let's start with density. So density is really the strongest predictor of transit use. And as a rule of thumb, we try to, when we're trying to plan for transit service, we try to identify areas that have densities of greater than five people and jobs per acre. On this map, those are the, that's the yellow area. Areas that reach that density could be considered, they're sort of on the tipping point, and they could be considered for fixed route service. But microtransit is a good first step to gauge the market. Areas that are below that density, so areas in green, those are areas that where fixed route service really will not work. And microtransit, if you're going to start with any sort of service, microtransit is the way to go. So we look at density in terms of both population density and employment density. So next slide, please. We also, in addition to overall density, we try to also understand the concentration of specific population groups. These are specific population groups that tend to have a high propensity to use transit. So this includes zero-vehicle households, people with disabilities, low-income individuals, youth and young adults, and seniors. We understand where there's a higher concentration of these folks, that's where we tend to see more transit trips. And you can see on the map there where in Jacksonville, you do have some areas that are in red there, those are where you have the highest concentrations of those specific population groups. Next slide, please. And similarly, just like there are certain population groups that are good predictors of transit use, there are also certain land uses that are good predictors of transit use. So the list there on your screen, the multifamily housing, medical facilities, educational institutions, major retail centers, and community and civic centers, which includes things like libraries, YMCA's, rec centers, and the like, and major employers. Those are the types of land uses we look for when we're trying to determine where should we draw the zone boundaries for microtransit service. We want to include as many of those key trip generators as possible to ensure that the microtransit service, once it starts operating, has the strongest chance of generating ridership as possible. Next slide, please. So then the last thing we looked at was regional travel patterns. And as Becca mentioned, this information came to us from Metro Plan. Metro Plan maintains a regional travel demand model, which is independent of mode. It's looking at how people are traveling regardless of how they're traveling, whether it's cars, or bikes, or bus, or, you know, anything. This, the lines on the map are showing the most prevalent travel patterns in and around Jacksonville. So what we see is that the strongest sort of concentrated travel patterns are destinations to and from the Air Force Base. Those are trips where you're seeing a lot of kind of critical mass of people traveling to the base. So much so that you potentially could support those trips with fixed route transit service. The issue, of course, is there are challenges operating in the base with fixed route transit service because of security concerns and so on. But outside of the base, the travel patterns in the rest of Jacksonville are pretty dispersed. There's not a single critical mass, a single corridor, that we would say, this is where the vast majority of your transit trips, vast majority of your travel in general, is coming and going. So you have a much more diverse set of travel patterns. And because you have that diverse set of travel patterns, microtransit may be a better fit than fixed route service. Because fixed route service does require kind of that critical mass of lots of people making the same exact trip versus lots of different trips. Okay, next slide, please. So based on all of that that we discussed, and also based on various meetings and communication we've had with city staff, the zone that you see there on the screen, I believe you guys have this map in front of you as well, that is the proposed zone for microtransit service in Jacksonville. So it does cover most of the city. It does not cover the Air Force Base. And it encompasses the vast, vast majority of key trip generators. In other words, those land uses, those destinations that we typically see transit trips being attracted to and produced by. Okay? So then what we did, once we determined what the zone would be, we did some modeling to determine what the service characteristics may look like. So with the microtransit service, its success really hinges on a couple of things. Wait time and travel time are very, very important to attracting riders beyond the most, most transit-dependent. People may try this service, and if they find that it takes too long to wait for a vehicle, they just, they may not, you know, try it again after the first time. So wait times are a function of a couple of things. They're a function of how many vehicles you have in service, and then also the size of the zone. In this case, Rock Region Metro has budgeted one vehicle for this Jacksonville microtransit service. So that's kind of a fixed variable. We're not going to touch that. So really, what we have to work with is the size of the zone. So that's what's budgeted, one vehicle. In terms of hours of service, Rock Region Metro has 12 hours of service per day, Monday through Saturday, budgeted for this service. And the zone, as I mentioned, was determined by this assessment of the market. So if you go to the next slide, please, Becca. So what we did is we took this information, the zone structure and the number of vehicles assigned to it, and we were able to do a simulation to understand what the service characteristics will look like. And what we found is, as long as ridership stays below 60 passenger trips a day, and as long as those trips remain within the Jacksonville zone that you saw, the average wait times would be less than 30 minutes. In other words, from the point where a person requested the trip by phone to the point where they're picked up by the vehicle, the average wait time would be below 30 minutes. And then once they're on the vehicle, the average trip time would be less than 20 minutes. Now, once ridership demand reaches 60 passengers per day, then those metrics that I mentioned, the wait times of less than 30 minutes, those start increasing to the point where you probably would need to consider either adding another vehicle to the fleet, potentially changing the zone borders, or implementing something like distance-based pricing to try to limit the number of long trips and encourage people to take shorter trips. If you have shorter trips, then you can provide more service per hour, more trips per hour. So those are some of the things you can do if the demand begins to outstrip the ability to support it with one vehicle. Then on the next slide, please. We also did a simulation with the same zone structure, but also adding an out-of-zone destination at McCain Mall, meaning that people could request a trip from anywhere within the Jacksonville zone to and from McCain Mall. So in this case, as long as the ridership remains below 60 passenger trips per day, approximately, the average wait time, which is longer than the previous slide, the average wait time would be below 45 minutes. The trip time, in other words, once you're on the vehicle, trip times become a bit longer with an average trip time of about an hour. And then again, once you surpass that 60 passenger trips per day, then it really starts breaking down, and your average wait times really start to grow to an hour, sometimes hour and a half. And some solutions will need to be considered, like expanding the fleet size. All right, next slide, please.
Thank you, Boris. So that, we did that simulation, and we know that the topic had come up before when Justin and I weren't attending these meetings, and that was when Charles was our CEO. But we wanted to put that in there to make it clear that our recommendation is that we start with one vehicle, that's what Jacksonville can afford, and circulate it within the city. And if there's the ability to grow, we certainly want to be able to connect back to the region, and we know that's important, but we must find a way to sustainably fund that. So what the support we're offering for this zone is 1.5 full-time equivalent drivers because you can't just, it's not just one guy or gal in a car. That guy or gal has to take a vacation day every now and then. They get sick every now and then. So we have extra people to come in and help operate the service in this one vehicle in the zone. We also are sharing a supervisor with some other microtransit zones that we have to keep tabs and help out when needed, and also a dispatcher. That's part of the bigger staff behind the scenes at Metro. And of course, behind all that is our biggest fixed costs center helping to power this service forward, and that is the might of everything that keeps all of our service running, the operations management, customer service, maintenance, accounting, HR, marketing, communications, legal, accounting, just all of that, safety as well. All of those representative departments that we have back at Metro are supporting this service. And in addition, the capital expenses include the vehicles. We also have some computers and the software, radios, and things like that that we use to put this service forward. This is what the service vehicles look like. You saw this on another slide. These are. This is what the service vehicles look like, you saw this on another slide, these are Lone Star Pro Master 3500s, they are accessible vehicles, they have a low floor and a fold-out wheelchair ramp. So if you're using a wheelchair, you will be able to use the service, and it can accommodate up to seven passengers. This, and this service vehicle is owned, maintained, fueled, and insured by Metro. So as part of the agreement, you know, the city is joining this agreement, and for the first three years, that's the, the agreement period, and that helps cover the depreciation time period for this vehicle, because we are purchasing them, they're actually on the way, hopefully, we'll talk about that in a minute, but they are purchased, and so we will be bearing the brunt of that expense, and you guys will be paying us a portion of that over the next three years to help us to pay for that vehicle to operate this service. The fare structure, I know that when Reese Pearl, who was our interim COO, was here last year, he said that it was a $1.35 per trip, and unfortunately Reese got that incorrect, it is $2 per person per trip. Boris's team helped us do a fare analysis of our microtransit zones that were citywide zones. We looked at different cities and states across the country to see what they charge for microtransit, and $2 per person per trip was one of the lowest fares that we could find. These are going to be longer trips than the, the zones that are within Little Rock and North Little Rock. The zones that are in North Little Rock and Little Rock cover much smaller geographic areas, they're more like neighborhoods. These are going to be longer trips. Longer trips means more gas money involved as well. So $2 per person per trip is a, is an affordable fee. It's, again, heavily subsidized service, you're not going to find a $2 Uber trip to get from any point to any other point in this zone, that's not going to be comparable. So it also helps us manage demand. So another way that Boris was saying that you could, if, if the demand starts to skyrocket and you still only have one vehicle, one thing that you could consider is raising fares. There is, however, we try to keep it affordable, because there is a relationship between fares and ridership. The higher your fares go, the lower your ridership goes, in general, in transit. So you still want to keep it affordable, $2 is a flat fee, it's, it's pretty affordable for a one-way trip across town, and we'll be monitoring and assessing the fees and fares at appropriate times, just as we do in Little Rock and North Little Rock. I will say that we haven't raised fares in North Little Rock and Little Rock since 2009, so it would not be surprising, and should not be surprising with the cost of 2022 costs as compared to 2009 costs, that we would also be increasing the fares in Little Rock and North Little Rock at some point. And as we, we expand our service, because the Conway Zone will be the first zone that we've had outside of Plaski County in our agency's history, we'll become more of a regional service provider. And when you look across the country at different transit agencies that offer regional service, they have a regional fare structure to go with it. So we'll be assessing that along the way. And we have also been made aware that when Charles was out here last August, he had proposed an initial introductory fare-free service to introduce everyone to the service, and we are working with the city to put that together to launch the service. The timeline for launching the service, it is heavily dependent on recruitment, hiring, and training of drivers, and vehicle procurement. We're living in the same pandemic you guys are. We've had some hiring challenges, really not so much on the microtransit side, that's really more on the fixed route operator side, because those buses require a commercial driver's license to drive, and that is a hot commodity right now in the labor market, finding someone with a CDL. So if you know anyone, send them our way. But we are not so worried about the microtransit hiring as far as the drivers, but the vehicle procurement is definitely affected by supply chain issues. So we do have these vehicles on ordered, and they are supposed to be arriving in early, early 2023, and we're getting updates, just like maybe some of you guys are in the businesses that you work in, we're getting updates on a monthly basis, or sometimes a weekly basis from our suppliers as to how close we're getting to that. So we'll, we'll keep working on the launch date, but it's, it's tied to when the vehicles actually arrive. Once they arrive, we can get the service off the ground pretty quickly, we put fare boxes on them, we do a couple of things, we wrap them in the Metro brand, and then we get them out the door and into service. Once we get the vehicles in and we have a better idea of when we can actually launch the service, we'll want to come and do some general public information meetings and tell people how the, the service operates, how to use it, how it works. We also have some behind-the-scenes operational tasks, so for example, at your university center that, that's right near the Air Force, if there's a special place that they want us to always park and stuff, so we're out of their way, if they have a bunch of car traffic coming through there or something, we work with them, with campuses like that to make sure that we're, we're doing what they want on their campus as far as where to park and things like that. And we also will do rider app training sessions. So when we've launched zones in Little Rock and North Little Rock, we've engaged in training sessions with special populations. For example, we'll be happy to go to the senior center, and if they have a monthly meeting, let's say, where everybody comes together, we can set aside some time to come out there and host a training session, and we'll work with them, they can hand us their phones. A lot of time, times, it's not that people who use transit don't have smartphones, but a lot of them do have smartphones, they just don't always know how to use them exactly. So we help people download the app, we help them book a trip, we'll do a test booking to see if they've got it, all of that stuff. And, and again, you don't have to have a smartphone to use the service, you can use a dial-in number as well. Post-launch, we will conduct a rider survey a few months into the service to see how people are liking it, and we'll also perform service performance monitoring. So we'll be looking at the number of trips and where they're originating and where they're going, so we can determine how people are using the service. We'll also be providing financial reporting. And another note on the fares, whatever is paid for in the fares is taken away from the balance of what the city of Jacksonville will pay to Metro every month. So when people pay their fares, they're actually lessening the burden on the city to pay into the system. So that's a good offset as well. With that, I'll take any questions that you guys have.
Okay, I'm going to, council members, I'm going to let you address, if a council member has a question, they, and you acknowledge them instead of me saying, okay, you can speak, and, and so your, your charges being, and after the council speaker, somebody in the audience that wants to speak, just let me know, and come up to the microphone, state your name, and ask a question of Rock Region. So I'm going to leave it to you back to recognize council members.
Okay.
Yeah, one question. I do appreciate you changing the map, the locations of the map, but could you go back to that slide real quick and just add one little spot?
Sure. Okay.
It's on the very west end.
Okay.
You've got a little square going up.
Uh huh.
That's actually in the city limits, and they're building a subdivision in there.
Okay.
So we could just include, I mean, include that. You see what I'm talking about?
Okay, I, I do. On the west side, you said, all the way over in the west, green area?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, got it, okay.
So what's the landmark?
It, I think it's near Cross Keys Apartments, is that correct? Is that where you pointed to?
It's on General Samuels Road, right before you get to 107.
Oh, the new Notting Hill subdivision, yes.
Okay.
Yes, Notting Hill.
Notting Hill, Notting Hill.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay, Boris, I know that you're hearing this too, so I'll, I'll make sure that I follow up with you on that.
Yeah, I heard, I, I see the general area, I just don't know how far west we're talking, but maybe you can show me later?
Yes, will do.
Okay.
Okay.
Our engineering department will, will get that information.
Okay, sounds good. Oh, perfect, thank you. Okay. Yes, sir.
When we were first introduced to this plan a while back, I believe they mentioned something about three vans, and now we're going down to one. They said they'd get two vans and then have one in the backup. This is when it was, when they all first came to us and talked to us about this.
Well, I, I can't speak to that, but what, what I saw in the agreement was, one, the pricing for one vehicle, and there is a spare. So that's, that's what I was saying earlier, you, we have the ability, if, if something happens, like let's say there's a flat tire or something, we have another vehicle that's a spare, that's on standby to send out to relieve that other vehicle, so there's hopefully minimal to no interruption of service for riders.
One other question here.
Mm-hmm.
Been reading a lot in the paper about some fellow cities having issues with this.
Yes.
And have y'all, are y'all working, actively working, y'all solving those issues? Or, because you know, it's got us concerned, when we see Sherwood and North Little Rock both taking your task.
Yes, so Sherwood has not signed an agreement yet, Sherwood wants a point of interest at McCain Mall. It is not our professional recommendation that you do that with one vehicle, for all the reasons that Boris just said. If you notice on those slides where he was comparing the service design, you went from an average trip time here, within Jacksonville only, of less than 20 minutes. If it goes to McCain and there's only one vehicle in the zone, that jumps and triples to less than 60 minutes. Now, there's a chance with all of this, that your overall wait and travel time would not be, you know, an hour and 45 minutes, maybe it's less, but maybe it's not, because it depends on what the demand is and where everyone's going. So it's not our professional recommendation, as the transit experts in the room, to do that, because your, your people who are riding are not going to be happy. They're going to call us, but then we're going to call you, and tell you that we're getting complaints about it, because it's not good service. As far as North Little Rock, I would, I would also preface all of this to say, this is an election year, so please keep that in mind, because something that might not be a topic of conversation at a meeting might come up because it's an election year. And in that particular case, the area around Shorter College was actually put, we put up microtransit in, in a pandemic response, it was an emergency response right after the pandemic hit. We took away their fixed route, which was falling in ridership, and we used that elsewhere in the system where we needed it at the time to get people to jobs during the pandemic, and we put up microtransit service that was emergency service. So it's not the same as rolling out planned service, which is what we recently unveiled in that area. And we had a follow-up meeting with those same constituents the next week, or the next day, actually, next week. And everyone in the room, when I asked them if they had used the service, no one had. And so I think that, to boil it down to brass tacks, I think that the concern was coming from some people who don't even normally use transit, so they're kind of unfamiliar with how it works, and there is a learning curve. You know, we all forget that we didn't come out of the womb learning how to drive cars. You learn how to do that at some point, and you can learn how to use transit, and it's really not as overwhelming or complicated as it may seem. And the good thing about that is if you can use, learn to use it here, because I teach students a lot with transit training at schools and things, you can use it anywhere. You, it, it's smaller, it's a smaller system, but it operates the same way that the New York MTA does, or the Chicago L, or the San Francisco BART, or transit in a foreign country. It's pretty much the same concept. So I think that was a lot of the concern, and we've worked through since then to get out in the community now that we have not, we're not in a pandemic emergency response mode, but we're in a normal planned service mode, and we're working through all those neighborhoods, and we're getting very good reception.
And I'm just going to ask all the council members to please talk into your microphones so it records well and so everybody can hear you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I've got two questions out there, but I want to give everyone else a chance. I wanted to ask my fellow council member, Councilmember Ray, is your area covered in that map, because I couldn't see it?
Yes, I see that, I'm on the bottom right.
Okay, all right. Now, secondly, dealing with the $2, will you accept EBT cards? There are disenfranchised people that do not have $2.
We do not, it's, it's cash or app usage only. However, the mayor and I have talked about doing something here in Jacksonville, kind of like similar to what we do in Little Rock. So we have agreements with six different academic fare partners, the Central Arkansas Library System, and also the Arkansas Homeless Coalition, which is a coalition of probably 20 to 30 partners that engage in homeless services. And what we, what they do is they help fund the system by paying a discounted rate for fare passes, and then they pay that to us, and then they hand out those passes to their different population groups, so those populations can ride fare-free. So there are definitely nonprofit partners here in the city that I think are interested in doing things like that, and some of them attended that stakeholder meeting. We have some area, I think, faith groups and religious groups here as well, that were interested in, in doing some programming like that. And as I understand it, the city also has had a long-running, I think, voucher system for the local taxi company here, so this could also be something that we could do. And we have that ability to do that through the fare boxes, which is an important point, because you want to make sure that when you do something like that, you don't have some voucher that can be easily replicated, so somebody can abuse that. So we have the ability to do that.
And another, if you don't mind, I noticed you said, if it's below 60 people, is that correct?
Yes, so the service model, if it's less than 60 passenger trips per day, not, not necessarily people, but trips per day.
Okay. All right, I'll save it for others.
Councilmembers?
First off, let me, let me state, like, I think this is absolutely great slideshow, presentation, infinitely better than the, the ones we had before. So I just want to state that to begin with. Now, there was a couple of, I just had a couple of questions about your wording and some of the things you had, like, number one, you kept emphasizing that there was a one-time CARES Act, like you kept saying, one time, one time, one time, and you, you said it was $500,000, which in the plan that we agreed to, it's broken down by, for three years.
Five years.
Well, three years with two years optional. So, so you're saying that after that is done, there is no more?
Correct.
Okay, that's pretty good. Also, you said the $2 was a mistake from the gentleman that came in and talked, but I also want to state that Charles Frazier, when he came here, the, the last CEO, he also mentioned $1.35. And you also have pamphlets that are currently being circulated in Little Rock that say $1.35. So, so I'm, I'm, you know, again, I'm not trying to harp on that, but this, it's not what you, it's not what we were told when we signed it. You know, like, when we, when we signed the contract and we talked about it and we voted on it, again, it's, it seems, it seems like you've told us one thing to get us in the, to get us to sign the contract, and you're like, oh, by the way, that, that's not included, and that's not included. And you also mentioned that the, the point of interest was not recommended, does that mean that it's not included? Like, if we decide to say, hey, look, you know, forget your recommendation, we want a point of interest at McCain Mall, does that happen? Or are you just like, no, we're not doing it?
Well, my personal recommendation would be to tell you, no, you're not doing it, because I know that you're going to get backlash from riders who are not going to like it. And I'll tell you why. There is no citywide microtransit zone in our system right now. So it's unique. We haven't even opened one up yet. That's why all of our pamphlets and all of our fare and pass information talk about $1.35, because we haven't launched Conway yet, we haven't launched Jacksonville, and Sherwood may never happen, we don't know. So we haven't launched it yet, and there is no transit rider who's had the experience, therefore, of riding from a citywide microtransit zone, taking up to possibly an hour to get there, and then waiting for a fixed route bus after that. That's not great service at all. That's a very long one-way trip, and I don't think anybody here wants to be known for not great service. Now, if, if you're gonna, you know, like, just put your stake in the ground and insist on it, I don't think anyone here, leadership-wise, is going to stop you. I would stop you, though, if I could, because I don't think that you're going to like the backlash that you get. As far as the statements from Mr. Frazier and Mr. Pearl, I cannot speak to what they said. I'm really sorry they got it wrong, but $2 per person per trip is very reasonable for this service, it's very affordable, and we're launching it with CARES Act one-time money that we could be using elsewhere, but we think it's important for this community to offer this public service. And it is a public service, just like schools and libraries and parks, it's needed by your residents, the mayor tells us that he's getting calls every month, from every week, from people who want it, Conway's telling us the same thing, so we can't get those vehicles in here fast enough. But it is longer trips too, because again, these, these zones are wider than Little Rock and North Little Rock. And, and again, North Little Rock and Little Rock have stayed at the same rates for more than a decade. I think it's unreasonable at some point for everyone to expect those rates to just always stay the same. They probably will go up in the future.
Yeah, but you're, you're raising the rate before we even get started. But I guess another question that I have is, it mentioned in here that you're collecting the data for the people that use the service and how, where they transfer. Are you guys selling that data to a third party, or is that all proprietary information that you keep on hand?
No, we're not selling it.
Okay. Also, there's no sundae on here, do we have a cost associated to add a sundae on there?
We can get that for you. We can get that for you. Okay. Yes, sir.
I think the $2 is really affordable fare for people that need to ride places, especially with the difference of gas and the cost of everything that's come up. I mean, that's, that's really effective and reasonable. It starts off at that. Sometimes you get information that's not true, but I thought the first time, $1.35 was way too inexpensive with what was happening. But, you know, it was said, but $2 is good. What I would like to know is, so you are going to have a way to keep up with the amount of trips that are run, and you're going to have a way to track the amount of time that each trip takes per person so that you can report back and let us know if it gets excessive, you know, like you're saying, you want good service. We really want good service for our citizens, that's why we're considering this. And I'd just like to make sure that you will have a way to track, you know, if someone's waiting 40 minutes and 50 minutes and, you know, we need to figure out how to do something a little better, like you said. So I guess that was something that you said you would be able to do.
Yes, and that's what that dispatcher's job is. They literally sit and watch the vehicles and watch the times, and they're keeping an eye on everything. And if somebody's been waiting too long, they start calling the drivers and moving things around and making things happen.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Oh, I'd like to say I like the $2, but if I was working in Little Rock, West Little Rock, push them back, had to go to the medicine center, now I pay my $2 for Keston Jacksonville here, what do I transfer to have to, how much more do I have to pay to get to my job in West Little Rock?
Well, currently in the proposed zone, it's just for Jacksonville, so you would not be able to reach the rest of the system. Again, this is us knowing that you guys need a different type of service. We've, we've been here, we saw how Route 36 performed, we know it's not meeting all the needs. We know that that regional connection's important too, but it has to be sustainably funded. So we've given you guys seed money with the CARES Act funds that we have. It's one-time pandemic funds, the feds are never going to give it to us again because hopefully there's not going to be another global pandemic. But, you know, that is, is a great question. It's building the service, and we think that the best way to do it is to start within the city, get people to the places here, the social services, grocery stores.
Let me cut you off. The other one was that you transferred McCain Mall. That's where the other presentation was.
And I realize that, I realize that that was said.
Did we talk about Jacksonville, is that correct?
Correct. Our plans have been to launch it within the city first. Again, it is not going to be good service for the people riding, and you will hear about it if there is only one vehicle operating here with multiple trips coming in possibly, especially at peak times of the day when everyone's going to school and work and going different places, and then having one vehicle, one trip be potentially able to pull that vehicle out all the way to North Little Rock. So it won't be good service. And you know what? There might be an opportunity once you see how it goes and you see if people are using it and liking it. You've been without a route for a couple of years now, so you could watch and see how it grows, and if it's gaining ground and people are enjoying it, talk about how you might be able to find some funding somewhere to get another vehicle, which would be the goal. I think there was a question over here.
Yes, first off, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation because it was very inclusive of all quantitative and qualitative information that would be needed to make a decision. My question though is if the only way that Jacksonville and Sherwood would say yes is if there was that point of interest destination, would there be a potential for the two cities to split the cost of an additional transport between the both cities?
I think that would be a great idea. I think there's definitely potential there.
I would like to just put that out there because it is most definitely something that is very much needed for this area. The majority of Jacksonville is a working town, and we don't all live, work in Jacksonville. That's, that's just simple.
Yeah, yeah, and well, and the travel patterns suggest that, so we know that. And I would agree, I think that's a great idea. And we will, we're actually in Sherwood next week, so we will take that suggestion to them. Yes, sir.
We've discussed at several of these meetings, the long-term goal of microtransit. Could you kind of go to what you see in the future being north of the river, microtransit, moving people in Conway and different areas of Bryant, whatever, whatever's going to happen, that your long-term goal that you see?
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I ask my question before they address that?
Certainly.
Here's a concern I have. It's laid on the tape. Initial meeting, the question was asked, do we have a spur, a place where we can, like if I take a transit to the mall, can I go everywhere else? You made a statement that people would be upset on the time. People are going to be upset because they only ride around in Jacksonville. When they come out of his zone, certain zones, they want to get from point A to point B, Baptist Health, that's what they want. Now, what's very important with budget is to say, we should try it out, and then we could come up with more money. In city business, money's not there to try it out. We kind of got to have what we're going to have from the beginning that's going to represent all the people and the needs. Me personally, and I'm not the whole show, $2 is reasonable for some people. It's reasonable for me and probably quite a few up here, but disenfranchised people, I'm a pastor, they're not going to ask for help. They would rather have an EBT card where they can go, and I know you probably can't get that converted to that, but I'm assuring you the obstacles that we deal with, I understand we deal with a contract, but I really want to solidify that the community, the constituents, needs are met. No one wants to go from point A in Jacksonville to point D in Jacksonville. If I'm going to get on a transit, I want to get from point A to Baptist Hospital, point A to my, you know, you understand what I'm saying? So that is my major concern. From the very first meeting, we did ask about that, and we were told, so whoever, I mean, the person you sent was not well-informed, which is not good in sales.
Yeah, you know.
He's not good, he's still not.
I'd like to make a comment too, please.
Well, could, let me just stress this.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to cut anybody down.
Just a couple of things. You know, again, I can't speak to the people who were here before me, and I'm not going to try because I can't. But I will say this, to answer your question about the need, we know there are some people who are interested in making connections outside of Jacksonville. We know that, we're the transit people. We've known that for years. But I will say that when we did our stakeholder meeting here, and we had employers and people from the educational sector here in Jacksonville and social services and healthcare, they were all pretty pleased that we were starting to give any kind of level of service to get from point A to point B in the city. You know, I know that, that the regional connection is a need, and you're correct, it's a need, but I think that starting out with the budget that you have, you're still going to please a lot of people, because I didn't hear any negativity in the room when we talked to any of them about it. And as far as your point of people who cannot afford the fare, we deal with that all the time in our regular system, all the time. And the fare agreements are the way that we can make sure that we have sustainable funding, because unlike the schools, unlike the parks, unlike the libraries, we don't have a long-term local property or sales tax holding up public transit. And Arkansas probably per capita is one of the lowest states as far as investing per capita for public transit. So we understand that there's a need out there, and that's why we look for partners to help us carry that burden. So the school districts, for example, help pay the fare agreement so their kids can ride fare free. So the TAP program that the Arkansas Homeless Coalition, they pay for that program so their constituents that they serve can ride fare free. So it does work, and I think we're absolutely open to coming up and helping you guys establish some of those FARA partnerships here. And I think that I can already tell that I know who I might call on first to come and help to support that, because I do think that there are willing partners here in this community to help with that. Next question.
You had made the comment that going to McCain Mall, we would probably hear about it. I feel like the things that we were told, which I know you can't do anything about what we've been told, the $1.35, the three vans, the trip to McCain Mall, I think we're going to hear a lot about that because we were all told that, so.
I think that the question to ask yourselves is, do you have financial flexibility to either partner with Sherwood on a second vehicle, to either pay for a second vehicle outright that's just for Jacksonville, to however you want to manage that? It's our understanding that, you know, the city's starting kind of from scratch as far as the funding. You haven't been paying funding for two years, and before that, frankly, you guys were paying a rate that wasn't sustainable for us to carry such a low number of people on Route 36. So it becomes a funding issue. I think we're here to help, and obviously we think it's a good, worthy cause, or we wouldn't be, over a five-year period, investing over half a million dollars in it. So if we can find a way to get the funding for its extra vehicles, I think that we can get that done.
One more, I'm just wanting to say, we were sold, and we bought this, on at least two vans running at the same time and one running to McCain Mall, so there wouldn't be wait times in town. This is the way it was presented to us in the beginning, and now you're changing what we signed the contract on.
Well, I think I remember that August meeting of last year, I think that was the meeting when Charles was here. And, you know, Charles is a, is a great visionary, he's a good pitch man, and I think what he was talking about was in the future, adding on to service to have like an on-demand community shuttle with the same software that powers it. But that was never, in my opinion, just working with Charles and knowing him, I don't think his intention was to say that was the ironclad way it was going to be. He's just a visionary. And I do think that he did believe and does believe in fostering regional connections here. And I think that's important for this community and for communities across America as we face climate change, for example. I do think that the regional connection's important and that he thought it was important. I just, that's not the financial agreement that we're moving forward with because we can't. We have to be able to sustain that and pay, have some money be paid into the system to support that, because more vehicles mean more fuel expenses, they mean more labor, we're in the same competitive labor market you guys are in, we have to pay our people a livable wage, and we want to do that. So it just costs, transit costs money, and as long as we can work together to find the funding for it, I think we can get you guys that regional connection that you want.
So I do have a comment to clarify. I did state that if you guys had the ultimatum of making that point destination between the two cities or losing this deal between the two cities, would you make that decision? Secondly, as an individual who attended a university that partners with you guys, I would like to make mention for the minute that with that share program, it's like a sticker or a type of identification that is put on either the ID of the school or whatever partnering program you are utilizing. And so just like we do the taxi voucher program, we did the voucher program, it would be similar, but again, it would be a sticker that would be easily identifiable, not replicatable, to be placed on an identification card of some sort, right?
So that's how the fare agreements work. The partners are the ones who know their constituents. They know, for example, if you're a full-time student enrolled in the program, so they would be in charge of creating your student ID, for example, or if you're like a constituent who is with the Central Arkansas Library System, for example, who's another one of our partners, they would give you a special library-created card that is yours, and that's how they identify you. And then they attach to that a security sticker, and it's called a security sticker because if you try to peel it off and stick it on your next year's ID, for example, like as college kids might be wont to do, maybe not, maybe they're, they behave a little better nowadays as compared to my day, but if you're going to try to put it back on the sticker, you'll, you'll ruin the sticker essentially, and you can't reuse it. So it's a way that we prevent fare evasion, because in a system as small as ours, you know, you need every cent that you get from fares, because it helps to power the system, it helps to pay for the system. As far as the previous question about whether we're going to fight you guys on whether you want that point of interest, I don't think that anybody wants to just make this go away, but you've been warned about how the service will be, so go ahead.
All right, and this isn't really a question. Okay. But for those of you that voted on this resolution, you voted to approve the resolution, we did not vote at that time on a plan. We voted on a resolution that gave the mayor the ability to enter in an agreement with Rock Region. We didn't vote on any kind of plan, okay? So we now have a plan that the mayor and Valley has agreed to, and we need to live with it, okay? What we are doing is we are providing public transportation inside the city of Jacksonville at a good price to let people move around here. That's what it all boils down to. I mean, I get, I mean, people, if you've got three people going to McCain Mall a day, or I've watched people get off the bus, there's not very many of them. It's all nice in a fairy tale world to be able to give everything to everybody, but I think what we're doing with this is you're giving the people that need transportation to go to the doctor here in town, go to the store here in town, the ability to do that. And that's.
At a reasonable price.
At a reasonable price.
And I appreciate what you said. Vote on the resolution, but I voted on the resolution based on the presentation. So if you're telling me I'm going to get fried chicken, and you give me fried turkey, I didn't ask for the turkey, I asked for the chicken. So that's the principle I'm looking at. The presentation said this, and the questions were put forward about that. I even included about the airbase. So therefore, that's what was presented. It was presented, we bit on it because of that, and we accepted it, so we're good with that. But now when you come back and tell me, I'm sorry, we're not going to be able to afford fried chicken, we're going to give you turkey, and it's not going to be fried, it's half done. This is what I'm looking at. I'm looking at the fact of the presentation. That's what I'm looking at. I understand what you're saying, my fellow council member, and I'm not ignorant to resolutions, but also knowing what a resolution's presented, that's what we heard. And if I'm the only one that heard it, it helped me. I know, I've been in many meetings in the Pentagon and everywhere else, I know how to listen.
To use your example, I'll just say, though, the meal was made available at all because we brought to the table all the ingredients to make it. So like the CARES Act funding makes the service available, and it's service for your citizens. And again, when we had that stakeholder meeting, we had people here from Jacksonville that represent Jacksonville employers, Jacksonville schools, Jacksonville social services organizations, Jacksonville medical clinics, and they were all happy to get their, your constituents where they need to go. You guys have people going to dialysis here every week, maybe you don't know that. They're senior citizens who need to get to the doctor for just their regular old health checkups, people who are going to that university center to get an educational opportunity for a better life. So this is the start. It doesn't have to be the end of the story. I think that we can help you guys try to find some additional money. If we see that the passenger trips are increasing, we can help you guys figure out how we can do that, and how we can petition to get some more money for public transit here. Yes, sir?
I just want to say that the CARES Act money is federal money that was given to you. Like it's not, it's not like money out of your pocket, you know what I'm saying? Like it's not, it's not money.
This money we get to determine where we want to use it in our system.
Absolutely, but it can only be used for this. So it's not like it's, it's money that could be used for anything. Like it was money that is only, I mean, the money was only to be used for, for a transit plan, and if you don't have a city to use the transit plan, then the money.
We do have a city. We have three primary funder partners that we could be using it on. We thought it was important to reestablish some service in Jacksonville, that's why we targeted you guys for some of this money.
If you, if you don't mind me asking, you said that you contacted, like, the schools, you contacted all these people, how many city council members did you contact? How many elected officials did you contact that maybe looked at the program?
This is the, this is the presentation to you guys, and Mike was there representing major employers, because we wanted to hear from your constituents. We wanted to see what people from the community said.
This was after the agreement had already been signed. It wasn't to build up to the agreement, it was to presentation of what the agreement was about.
Absolutely, that's what I was saying. You, you said during this presentation that you talked to all these people, which obviously this came after the vote happened, and I was like, okay, well, how come you didn't reach out to any of us? Like you, you mentioned that you talked to all these other people.
This is the opportunity where we're reaching out to you.
But you showed them the program.
This was three weeks ago, that week, stakeholder here, three weeks.
All right, I got another question.
Hold on, I have one more, just to say, I know you also stated. I know you also stated about the items in the paper and the stuff involving North Little Rock, and you mentioned that this is, this is an election year, so a lot of the proposed stuff is coming up because it's election year. Like, you only had one person on that whole city council that was really for, according to what, according to the minutes and what was done for the North Little Rock. So I know that, like, of the eight people that were on the city council, like, seven of them weren't up for political election. So I just want to say that you saying that, you know, that some of these concerns are only being brought up because it's political season is, I don't believe that's 100% accurate.
Okay. Next question?
Thank you. So for clarification's sake, the CARES Fund Act money was distributed per what? Was it per county or per city? Because I'm pretty sure that you said per county.
I think it was distributed to different transit agencies.
Right. But you had Conway in a different area and the Little Rock area in another. And so that total fund came to the Little Rock metro area, is that correct?
So Little Rock, everything in the Little Rock urbanized area is under Rock Ridge Metro as far as federal funding. So that comes to our agency, and we can do with it what we see fit.
Right, exactly.
And Conway has a separate pot of CARES money because they're in a separate UZA.
And that's the point that I'm trying to make. So theoretically speaking, you could put all of that money in a local, a smaller concentrated area within the Little Rock metro area.
Correct. Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to thank you for the presentation. I don't want to belabor it, I mean, it's already been signed. However, the first presentation sucked because it didn't cover everything, and we do know our constituents need something, so I'm with that. But, you know, it is what it is.
I definitely thank you for the presentation, again.
You're welcome.
Before you get to Glee, Becky, do we have anybody in the audience that'd like to come up and state your name in the microphone and ask a question of Rock Ridge?
Not that mic.
Any one little green ones?
Keith Weber, as everybody knows.
Does Sherwood still have any bus service at all?
No, sir. They run Route 36 with Jacksonville.
Okay. How far up does the bus go up 161?
161, is that, okay, so it's far north, I would say, in this general vicinity that we go.
Does it go to St. Luke's?
It goes to McAlmont. It goes to like Fairfax, Cross, like it's 46th Street over to 161, and then south on 161 to Fairfax and gets over to the McCain Walmart.
It doesn't go up to St. Luke's, then?
I don't think so.
If your service gets sold to Sherwood, can you establish a point of contact between Jacksonville and Sherwood and Gravel Ridge?
Possibly. I think that we would want to see if we could, I think I'd want to take that to Boris's team before I can answer that question. I never know exactly unless I'm looking at it with a professional planner on the staff, how far and all that works with the distance between the points. So I'd rather have that be answered by our transit planning team.
Could you satisfy the people that want to get further out? Could you move the bus that's going to McAlmont so it goes up to St. Luke's? St. Luke's, is this church's name?
St. Luke's is in Jacksonville.
Yeah, but it's at 440, the big church. Yeah. Could you bring that bus route up to there and then make a point of contact shelter there so that people could take the microtransit to St. Luke's and then get on the regular bus there without going all the way to McCain? And the same thing with Q Avenue, if you bring a route to Sherwood.
So I'm.
To cut the distance to going all the way to McCain and the traffic.
Yeah.
Compromised.
So I can't, I can't speak to the infinity, like, with, I can't say yes or no completely to say whether we could do that. But it's, now that I know that that's an interest, I will add it to the list of things to have our transit planners look at. One thing that you got to know is that, you know, in North Little Rock, which the McAlmont zone's in North Little Rock, it's, we're sharing resources among the North Little Rock zones for some of that. So it may not be that, you know, it seems like it's a no-brainer sometimes if something seems very close to the zone, but we got to think about where all those cars are going and the drivers. So we just have to take that back to our transit planning team. But thank you for making us aware of that, and we will note it.
Any other questions in the audience or, yeah. I'd like to thank you for your presentation.
Well, thank you, thank you again, and we are really excited, actually, and I think that your community is excited too. All the folks that I've talked to, I remember back pre-pandemic, we talked to people in three different senior citizen living centers, and they were all very excited about just getting to have this service. That's a pretty nice fee for them to pay and easy for them to pay and go to the grocery store. So they're just excited and enthused about that. So I hope that you guys are excited about it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am? I was just going to show you on the map, make sure we're talking.
Oh, okay.
Is that a little pocket right there?
Also, I'm going to need you to send me a copy of your presentation.
Okay, will do. All right. Thank you so much, Mayor. Boris, thank you for sitting in on the meeting. Thank you again.
Yes. Councilwoman Levens, you have a question about financial. Would the consent agenda, would you like to ask that question? From the financial.
Was that part of the consent?
That's part of the financial.
Yeah, I just.
That's part of the consent agenda, and we already passed it, and since she wasn't in the room at the time.
Yeah, I thought it was coming at the end.
Well, it's early in the agenda, so we're just coming back to it. Cheryl, Councilwoman Levens has a question about the financial report we just received.
Hey, Cheryl, sorry about this. I do have a question. Like, I was just looking at this, and one of the biggest glaring things for me, I guess I just had the question, is it shows that so far, we've taken in $7.7 million, and we spent $9.9 million, which puts us at a deficit of 2.2 million.
Yes.
That has not been the trend of previous years.
Yes, it has.
Has?
It has. What has happened is, we report revenues and expenditures on an accrual basis, and so the money that we received in January and February from our sales tax, we recorded that actually as 2021 revenues. And so that's the reason why it looks that way. But as far as the cash purposes, this report only shows revenue and expenditures according to how we posted.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, again, that was just it. I just saw that number, it was kind of a sticker shock, you know, and I was just like, I went back and looked at the old ones, and I didn't see, I didn't notice that deficit.
Yeah, it's got two months in rears on sales tax.
Cool, awesome. That was my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so that brings us to the next item on agenda, ordinance 1699. I'd entertain a motion to place ordinance 1699 on first reading. Motion. I've got a motion.
Is this to read the ordinance?
This is to read it, yes. Okay, got a motion, second real call.
Councilmember Deets. Bolden. Levens. Sandsing. Ray. Trailer.
So we did it last time. We're, I'm going to allow the reading of the ordinance, even though we didn't have a majority of the body, we have a majority of those present. So, yes, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to place on the November general election ballot, the question of amending Jacksonville Municipal Code 6.04, .045, to lift the ban of the bull terrier breed of dog, commonly referred to as pit bulls, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Levens to its line.
Thank you, Mayor. As everybody knows, like, I've been trying to see if there was some kind of compromise or something that could be done for us to repeal the pit bull ban. Like, I've been contacted by a large amount of citizens of the city. I brought it up, it's continued to be shot down, and there's varied reasons. One is like, there wasn't enough people that really wanted it, and the people that did show up wasn't an actual, you know, an actual, like, good sample size of the citizens of the city. There was a lot of reasons, public safety was also mentioned. I just brought this forward because I'm like, okay, let's, how about this? Like, this is, this is something that's been brought up month after, you know, or year after year it's been brought up. There are definitely people that want it. Everybody says that they've been getting phone calls that there's not. So why don't we just, like, nip it in the bud, like, put it up for a vote, let the citizens of the city vote. If they vote for it, then obviously it was something that was wanted by a majority of the city. If it's not, if it's voted down, it definitely doesn't have to be brought up anymore. I mean, we should let the citizens decide.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, I just have a statement. I do not think that it is the taxpayers' burden to have this on the ballot. I don't think that it should be.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment? Councilmember Deets?
I've been in the meetings, and I go back to 2007 when we had some educated council members there also that were against it. Reason being, it was because of, we need to protect the citizens of Jacksonville. So it seems like to me that with all that's been said, and I'm against spending the money also, we have a whole lot of needs that we need to spend money for, as far as that. But I feel like that we've been dealing with so many issues, pit bull ban, chickens and everything, that the council needs to put these behind us. And here in the future, we need to start putting things that's going to benefit all the citizens of Jacksonville and the city of Jacksonville, and let's figure out where we go from here. So I'm against the pit bull ban, I'm just going to tell you.
Councilmember Henshaw.
I just was saying, the citizens, the citizens voted for us to make decisions for the city. They also expect us to protect the citizens of the city. Our highest calling up here is to protect the citizens in Jacksonville. And going backwards, allowing a dangerous breed back in the city, is the city council of doing that is wrong.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Councilmember Twitty.
I'd just like to make the comment, because at our meeting that we had Christina, is that her name, had put in, she's got a lawyer, she has put in motion to get the petition to put it on the ballot. So I say we go ahead and let her go forward with what she has started.
Okay. Councilmember Levens.
So, again, I understand that a lot of people were, you know, are like, we shouldn't spend the money, we shouldn't do this, we shouldn't do that. You know, a lot of the stuff that's being brought up is from 15 years ago. Like, there's a lot of stuff that has changed in 15 years. Like, we've had a ban in place, and we still know that there are pit bulls here, but yet there hasn't been any, any safety concerns, there hasn't been any, anything to show that there's vicious breeds here, even though we all know that they're here already. I just, again, I feel that this is something that should be done. If it's a cost that's associated with it, that's the problem, like, I personally will put the money up to reimburse the city for the cost of the election, which would be $4,500. That's what I've been told. So I'll put my own personal money up if that is, if that is the big problem that everybody has. But I think that this is something, here's what's going to happen. Say that, say that Ms. Henderson from the Jacksonville Friends of Animals, she does end up going out and getting the signatures, and she does get it on the ballot, and the ballot passes, and people, and it shows that people want this. Like, you guys are supposed to be, you know, the ones that are like saying, hey, we're supposed to be representing, that shows a full disconnect from the representation that you're supposed to be doing as opposed to what the vote actually goes through. And again, I've been, I've been contacted about this, I really don't have, literally, I don't have a dog in the fight, like, I'm not going to have a pit bull, just like I'm not going to have chickens at my house. But this is something that citizens have contact to be about, and I know there's been some people, other city council members that have been contacted for, and just in the same aspect, I've had people contact me against. And I've swayed both sides, I've tried compromising, like, we still have a committee that we're messing with, but again, I think that this is a vote that we should just let the citizens make.
I have a comment to make on that, Brian. Okay, you're saying that we don't have an issue with the pit bulls that we have in town right now. That's because they are banned, and those people that have them, and we do know that they do have them here, they're, keep them behind closed doors because they are banned here. So we're not seeing them walk out in the street, taking them for a walk, or at our dog parks or anything else. For that reason, it's because it's banned. And again, if Christina has got her lawyer, what she says she has, and she has went through the steps, then let her finish it. I don't think it's the burden of the, let the citizens vote by Christina doing what she said she was going to do.
The thing is, is that that's the citizens, that's a citizen doing that for the other citizens. I just think that as city council members, like, we should, we should be the ones to give the city a chance to vote, not a citizen.
Councilmember right.
Did you hold mine?
Yeah.
Okay. The ordinance that we have on the books now is sufficient for the city of Jacksonville to citizen. Police chief has said that in a very big, very big, that's good enough.
Any other council member? Okay, I did. Oh, Councilmember Rains, she has something you will say?
Just to clarify, we are talking about potentially dangerous breeds. They are not inherently vicious, and we should not describe them with rhetoric thereon. The individuals within Jacksonville as a whole are absolutely amazing citizens, amazing individuals, and there is only a small fraction in, 2007, Dr. Meachack said roughly 10% that exhibit dangerous behaviors within the room when he's, you know, examining them. And so I just, I want to be clear, this is potentially dangerous, they're not vicious. We're dealing with managing a city of people, not the dogs.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'd entertain a motion to approve on first reading and place on, suspend the real soon place on second reading. Got a motion. Is there a second?
So how's this work? If it doesn't get a second, it just dies?
Yes, sir.
That's great.
Okay. All right. So I'm seeing it die for like a second.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, announcements? When's casino night? August? Mary, I'm asking you. Is it August 5th? Ended August 5th? And I didn't have the senior center. Oh, Southern Oaks is, is that where, is that Southern Oaks? Okay. Okay. And does the senior center have any fundraising thing coming up? Okay. Any other announcements that come before this council? All right. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Your favorite sound, Dean.